One Java Street. Marie, please start with the roll call.
Del T.
Here.
Maria Vieira. Trina McKeva. Trina? She was just here.
I know she is here.
Looks like she was having connection problem.
Steven Shetland.
Here.
Here.
Aaron Crinkwater.
Thank you, my group.
Moish Indig. Rosanna Kaminsky.
Here.
Abraham, excuse me, Abraham Niedmanitz. Dante Nacelli.
Yeah.
Rabbi Needeman.
Here.
Karen Neves. Isaac Sofa. Robert Salano. Stephen Weiberg.
Yeah.
Yeah.
William Vega.
I know he's here.
He's, yeah, I see him.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Simon Weiser. Michael Andrews. Keith Berger.
Here.
Corey Canton.
Here.
Michael Kowamka. Katie Nebletowski.
Here.
Here.
Allison Stone.
Here.
Here. Okay, and Trina McKeva is back in, Marie, I guess you know.
I have 12 people in from the call.
Marie, I'm here. I don't, I wasn't there when you called my name. It's Trina.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we have a quorum. All right. So why don't we get started with the presentation? This is a presentation for One Java Street, a waterfront application, and who will be presenting?
Isaac Henderson, I'll start off and then I'm gonna work with Karen on the presentation tonight. First off, I just want to introduce myself as Isaac Henderson. I'm the Development Director at Lend Lease. We are leading the development of the One Java waterfront as well as the One Java overall development. Joined tonight by representatives from Marvel Architects, the Lead Project Architect, as well as representatives of the Landscape Architect and Waterfront Architect at Jake Porter Field Operations, as well as members of my land use attorney for Free Frank. And we're here all available to answer questions for you as we go through this presentation. Before we get started on the presentation, I did however want to take this opportunity to just update this group and you guys about the India Street Pier and the ferry landing. We understand, I understand, I know how crucial that is as a resource to this community, as well as it is to us at Lend Lease as well. First, I just want to just reassure everybody that we are fully committed to returning ferry service as quickly and safely as possible. You know, we've been hard at work since the ferry initially went down on the 23rd of May. And we're not only fully committed to bringing it back, but we also really are committed to bringing it as safely and securely as possible to limit interruptions moving forward to ensure that it's up and running as safely as well as done. So we have since May been working tirelessly, first to go through a four-step process really related to first investigation, understanding why the piles on the ferry failed. That is now completed. The second was coming up and working with our public partners at EDC and Hornblower to identify possible solutions in engineering and working with our engineers to develop a plan forward that is also now complete. And now we're in our final process of permitting. We're second to final process where we are now have to work with three public agencies. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, US Army Corps of Engineers, and then New York City Small Business Services. They're the three agencies that oversee any construction along the waterfront and in the East River itself related to the piers. We have submitted applications to DEC and ACOE, and we anticipate submitting to SBS in the next one to two weeks. So we're making significant progress there. You know, from there, we'll then begin what could be a four to six month process of permitting to get the agencies to approve, review, and permit the drawings. We're also entering into a moratorium imposed by DEC on the waterfront that limits any construction to happen between the months of December and May due to fishing, fisheries, spawning. So as we go through this process, we will not be able to commence any construction till May. But we're hoping that our permitting during that, during the moratorium period will be done and completed. And then hopefully begin construction in June of 2022. We anticipate construction will take somewhere between three to four weeks. And we're really pushing to try to get the ferry up by the end of the month to have it back up and running by July. So we're well aware of how significant of a resource that this is to the community. We badly, badly also align with that and wanted to be back up and running. But I just wanted to assure this group they were doing everything possible to bring the ferry back up and running. So I just wanted to give that update before we just start on the overall presentation. I did sort of mention my team members, but you know, where we are in the process is, you know, any development on a waterfront site like this requires approvals from DCP for waterfront public access areas. Our application for those approvals includes two zoning actions. The first, which is the zoning action that's been technically referred to the Community Board today, is a zoning authorization under Section 62822B to make modifications to the design requirements for waterfront public access areas. At the end of this presentation, Karen will go over in detail the two specific modifications we are requesting. The second action is a zoning certification under Section 62811 for which DCP will confirm that the proposed design of the waterfront or public access areas on the site meets all the technical requirements under the zoning. So that's technically why we're here. We're also going to run through you our entire plan as well, just so you know, you have some context. So before that, we get started on the plan, I just wanted to just give a little bit of an overview of who we are, who I work for. I have had the opportunity to present to many of you and get to know many of you, but as a, as just an overview, Lend Lease, we're an international, fully integrated property and infrastructure group operating across development, construction, investment management. We're not new to New York, and we're certainly not new as a company. We're established in 1958. And we have 22 major urbanization projects across nine gateway cities. You know, we've, or at this point, developed over 21 million square feet either under development or in, or previously developed. Next slide. And you know, really, my work and our focus is really here in New York. We've been here since 1979. And we have over 500 employees based out of our office here over in the MetLife Building. And we've developed over 1,100 residential units in progress. So you know, development is core to Lend Lease's mission. We have a lot of experience in this area. And you know, really developing dynamic and exciting places is core to our mission. And we really feel like One Java and specifically the One Java waterfront will be a significant asset and part of that as well. So what you're gonna see now is really us running to you through with you guys where we are on our plan and our waterfront and then opening up for committees. This is not a project really about the residential building. It's about the waterfront. The development is still being, the residential piece is still being designed and going through that, and that's a has a bright project. So today's focus is on the waterfront itself. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Karen to run you through our current plan.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see everyone again. So just as a quick recap of where we are today with regard to the process and the public engagement process as well. So in November, Lend Lease started to introduce themselves. Once they got the site to neighborhood organizations. In January, we went to various organization, community groups and showed, and listened and showed where we were at the time. In March, Lend Lease introduced themselves to elected officials. In April and May, we came back to neighborhood organizations to collect more feedback input on where we were. In June, we came to the Community Board meeting for Parks and Waterfront Committee. It's June 23rd, I believe. October, we submitted city plan in our drawing and are referred. And now we're here, November 1st, in front of you, One Jove's Committee. Some of you have seen these slides. I'm sorry? Some of you. David, do you want to mute yourself, please? Thank you. Some of you have seen this slide before. I mean, we think it's really important, of course, that we show ourselves in the context of Greenpoint-Williamsburg waterfront. The Greater Waterfront is slowly developed and waterfront parks are coming to be continuous. So for us, really importantly, the first thing is to be continuous with the, with the community, with the neighborhood, but also to the north of us, to the south of us, and of course, the ferry to the water. The site sits between India Street, Java Street, West Street, of course, the water. We have India Street Pier is part of the project as well as a kind of upland area, which is about 11,520 square feet. The site's context, you might know it, on the left side, we have Java Street. The left, the upper left is Java Street. It's cobblestone street, obviously dead ends and into the water. Our neighbor to the south is a kind of a low-lying building, is not changing at the moment. Below that is India Street. You see the new tenant, the new neighbor to the, to the right of it, 21 India. The site to the left. And then on the right upper is the waterfront as it is today, kind of, you know, in need of cleanup and sort of refurbishing and design. And below that is the pier, the access to India Street Pier today. Some of the site's constraints, the primary ones are the site condition. It's windy, it's salty. The water's edge is broken and obviously need repair. The existing street elevations are quite low. And then the scale of the site, the WPAA area is a constraint. The East River has strong currents, as we know, choppy water, there's ferry wakes. So how much we can get into the water was something we looked at early on. Then the flood elevation and projected sea level rise are always a constraint at the waterfront's edge. And of course, city planning zoning requirements are another. The waterfront public access area is in green here. It includes the pier as I've mentioned. And in addition, Lend Lease is providing the area in yellow, which is almost double that upland area. The design is inspired by, you know, Greenpoint shipbuilding, the history of shipbuilding. The slips to us kind of connotes a kind of a freedom of sorts, right? It's for people, it's for boat, it's just to kind of watch the coming and going. So something really freeing about that. And so in the design, as you see, these kind of, you know, sort of diagonal lines, they're not only pathways, they're kind of are kind of a nod to that history, to the slips, right? And what they can do. So this site plan shows with the pier, but we will focus really on the upland. We're not doing a lot of pier. The waterfront site plan is what's, the area bounded in orange is the WPAA area. We have the India Street Pier. I'm gonna go from left bottom to right, sort of counter clock. We have a number of gardens, upland gardens, riparian gardens that also incorporate sort of a living shoreline, if you will. We have the river landing. That's one of the terminuses of the slips. This angle here, it's sort of immersed in planting. The next one down is one walks down. There is, of course, benches, more gardens. The next slip down is what we call the prow. It's another sitting, steps coming down that kind of hugs the get-down to the south of it. The get-down is sort of a series of steps that get to the water. South of that, there is, it's a, it's a platform area. We have what we call the pier reveal. It's a cutout in the platform. Fitted with tidal pools and counter, a counter height sort of table with sitting, sitting stools around it. And to the south of it, we have this social alcove, these double-sided benches that sort of offer, you know, engagement and gathering and so on. When we go down, there is, it's actually ramping down to Java Street. Additional to what you've seen in June, we have a planted area, the terminus of Java, some seating, lighting, as well as sitting steps that are on the south side of the building, sort of. The idea is that, you know, if there are events on Java Street, there's a kind of a place to observe it and to kind of watch also the water and whatever is happening there. Going up, that area where you see these white boxes with my cursor is what we call the river room. It's part of the building. Flexible for now, as well as this kind of a small bosque of trees here that is left flexible space with sitting, things like that. Going up a little bit, you would have the slip that cuts through that and gives us ADA access to this area, what we call the perch. The perch in itself and the river room are a little bit elevated from the waterfront, just to get us a little bit closer to the designed flood elevation of the building. Here, we have movable sittings and tables, also amongst trees, shade. We have a deck with adurandex chairs, a kind of a feature lounge seat with a planter in it. And then another countertop bar-like that observes, you know, that kind of faces midtown, if you will, but also faces the pier. So if you were waiting to, for someone, that's a great place to wait and see them approach from the ferry. There is the lawn in the middle, flexible lawn, sitting steps at the edge of the perch. That's, that's about it for the program and the site plan. In terms of programming, we kind of balance the passive and active recreation. So we have planting, native planting, soft edges. There is the lawn that's left flexible for various uses. Socialization, various furnishing that sort of encourage various type of socialization by different kind of groups, right? Ability and ability. F and B, thinking something that lends itself to the waterfront as well. It kind of is a low-key environment lounge, a get-down, as well as sort of ecological education moment. And we have these tidal pools and riparian gardens and things like that, that we hope become part of that story. Active programming, so as I mentioned, the lawn is a flexible use lawn. I hope that there will be some yoga, tai chi, and things like that on the lawn. Markets, markets we see more at the ends of the streets, India Street and Java Street. A little bit more hardscapy and able to take tenting a little more easier. Performances, we could see performances and movie nights on the lawn with the extension into the perch. So one could sit on the perch and watch the same, obviously, screening or performance. Having space for community meetings, block parties, of course, dances and community events, as well as workshops that we also envision kind of spill onto the streets perhaps for more space on the weekends and things like that. Softscape, so there is the riparian edge right along the water. It's a little tougher, more limited in terms of what species can take the salt water. Then we have a transitional garden, series of them. We have the lawn and we have the upland garden. The intention is that the planting looks kind of wild. It's not so manicured, with the exception of the lawn. It's not intended to be mowed, but kind of left for, you know, to attract pollinators and create habitat and be part of the life cycle of the river. A little more about the planting. So as I said, at the water's edge, we have the Spartaina plantings that can take salt water, solid dago, the bearberries and things that can take salt water. They will be planted within the riprap at the very edge, right along the bulkhead. You could see the bulkhead is waterward of that. The next one, the transitional planting will include aster. In terms of the tree species, we'll have the pineus regida, the pitch pine. We also have the other pine that is used in Grand, in Domino, Grand Ferry Park. The shorter pine, short pineus regida, and sweet gum, as well as grasses and shrubs, like the bikeris and things. That also lend a kind of wildness to the, to the planting beds. A little bit upland, we will have ornamental trees. We'll have the amalakis. We have nisa. We have betula. We also have, on the perch, we will have one specimen of magnolia tree as well. And various, again, shade-loving and sun-loving, depending on where they are, planting that has seasonal interest. Connection to the river, again, the pier. Want to encourage people to come and fish and use the pier as much as possible. The river landing, I mentioned, it's kind of a recessed landing and the planting in the riparian gardens. So really feeling as if you're closer to the, to the water. The same with stony get-down, kind of a more natural looking, you know, get-down. And then we have the pier reveal with the tidal pools at the bottom, that one could see how they, you know, how they, the life of a tidal pool over the course of a day, over the course of a week, a season, a year, which would be interesting. Some of the sustainability aspects that were incorporated here regarding stormwater management and natural resources. So we've added 6,500 square feet of permeable surfaces, using engineered soil that allows for quick drainage. Incorporating living shoreline technique at the very edge of the water. We are adding 36 trees, of course, all reducing heat island, the heat island effect, both the soft surfaces and the trees, sequestering carbon and providing shade. All these also increase habitat area. There will be native plants. Sorry, native plants, attracting pollinators. And of course, the tidal pools will be another element of that. So walking around the site, this is approach from India Street, coming up to our left would be the perch, the kind of the area that takes you up or to that kind of wooden deck. To the right would be the pier, and to the front is the water. If you look to the right, you see the approach to the pier, the, the, sort of the ramp that leads one to the pier will be newly created, newly done. And that would have sort of a curb and railing and so on, same fashion as the waterfront. Once you're at the pier, you look back, and this is the park. You see the lawn, you see the seating. You see some of the landing that are kind of embedded in the, in the plantings and the perch beyond. This is that river landing that takes you down closer to the water. It's not a get-down per se, but it is immersed. And that's the idea with the Spartaina and the golden runs. The get-down, a little bit south of that, here, we were able to remove some of the guardrails we had previously. I don't know if you remember, but really made it feel more natural and really a stony kind of get-down to the water. As you move south, this is the area that's on platform. So here we have the pier reveal with a countertop and the social room. And coming down to Java Street, again, there's the added, added planted area. There are the sitting steps that kind of look towards what we call the river room and area, you know, to the street where hopefully things will happen. Going back on the perch, just to show a few images of that as well, is the kind of that other countertop that overlook the pier. So again, if you're waiting for the ferry or you're waiting for a friend, it's a really comfortable place to sit. There is this kind of big planter in the middle that would also be a lounge seating on one side, a bench on this side, and a series of movable seating as well. Getting a little closer, the rondeck chairs overlooking the lawn, the water, the view, and a kind of aerial perspective of the entire site, the project. A little bit about furnishing and materials. I know we had a few, you know, a few questions about it back in June. So just wanted to point out, we have bike racks, we have trash receptacles. We have a series of benches, with backs, without backs. The area that have little Xs are companion seating, those for strollers, for ADA, for wheelchairs. We have as well the kind of that pier reveal countertop, then also a wood bar on top of the guardrail, surrounding the pier reveal only. The railing underneath is stainless steel, and the railing around the platform is all stainless steel for the walk. But here, at the pier reveal, we are changing the top rail to wood. Light poles, we have, we're using the flushing meadow pole throughout the site. And at the end here, where you see teal color, we may have to use DOT standard bench. We will see if we could use the same language DOT had requested there, Ben. The palette of sitting within the WPAA is such, it's made of wood. Exact species is yet to be determined. We're looking at various sustainable approaches. So there are long benches with backs, without backs, short benches with backs, without backs, double-sided bench and seating that is embedded in the sitting steps. And the pier reveal looks something like this. Again, there is a kind of countertop with a wood bar top around. So comfortable and warm when somebody leans against it to look down to the tidal pools, as well as a kind of an area for ADA users. What other furnishing would be the bike rack, the litter receptacles, and the flushing meadow living there. A bit about paving. So this is the context of materials surrounding our site. We have asphalt paver along 21 India waterfront. We have a composite decking in a small portion. There's a precast concrete hex paver in this secondary path in the back there, 21 India again. And then jumping to Java, there is the old cobblestone. The material we're proposing here is a simple palette. The light blue is a precast concrete paper. There'll be a kind of a darker gray material with a bit of aggregates, just to give it a little bit of texture, a little bit of life, so it doesn't feel kind of dead. The slips, the pink areas will be, again, precast concrete planks that sort of are arranged like planks along a slip. That's the idea of the intent that it would bring to mind, that, that this is a slip. And on top of the perch, because it's a little bit elevated, we feel comfortable with using a decking, Kebabney, Kebabney's wood, along with some of the furnishing here. So, so really, a simple paving palette. The waivers that are requested are two. Actually eliminated a few, maybe since we've seen you. So the two, the first one would be the screening buffer. It's required that we have 50% evergreen species and that they should be at least four feet high. The area where we're asking for the waiver is this planter where my cursor is right now. It's this planting bed right here. It's a larger planting bed. And that is because we want people to be able to see the views to the water. We don't want to obstruct the views. So the ratio of evergreen and the four feet is sort of, is to, is to create transparency, to be able to see in and out, you know, from. to be able to see in and out, you know, from into the river room, which is this area here. The second waiver that we're asking is for the guardrail. We're asking to keep the existing guardrail along the pier. We're not doing a lot of the pier at the moment. There's a thought that, you know, once it gets done, it might be, you know, done at a later date. And then the, the other aspect of the guardrail is the, we're asking for a waiver from the stainless steel top to incorporate the countertop and the wood bar at the pier reveal. Again, just to kind of lend the warmth, to connect it to the rest of the furnishing and to make it kind of comfortable to lean against. And Isaac, I'm gonna end it to you here for the community benefits.
Thanks Karen. Yeah, just, I think, just to sort of talk about just the overall project, you know, there's, you know, reviewing this sort of a real lot of community benefits here, but just running through them, obviously, you know, real focus is, is really improving sort of what is an underutilized vacant abandoned space that will really enliven, give new access to the waterfront. In addition to that, we're also going beyond what we're required to the WPAA area and adding additional open space, but I busy on what zoning requires. And although the buildings as a right, it will be thirty percent affordable. So we will be adding a significant amount of affordable housing overall to the, to the housing stock, as well as activating the ground floor plane, both facing the waterfront, but also along West Street, enhancing sort of the ability to make this sort of a walkable, community-driven neighborhood. You know, we're also currently engaging with a number of community groups, excluding that would sort of be provided with opportunity for around educational opportunities in the waterfront itself. And then obviously just side, the project aside, there's going to be significant workforce benefits. And we're really focused not only on sort of employing sort of minority and women-owned businesses, but really focusing on local persons who are either unemployed, unemployed and looking to enter the construction field for the first time. So we're really excited not only about bringing a brand new, dynamic waterfront to this community, but the overall project itself, we think is going to be not only an asset for those things, but really provide a lot of benefits, both on for housing standpoint, retail opportunities, educational and workforce.
And that's it, everyone. I'm gonna toggle back to the site plan, but by all means, if there's anything anybody wants to discuss particular slide to go to, I can go there. So opening up to questions or comments if anybody.
Dale, I have a. I do, Dale. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the presentation, Karen and Isaac and everyone. Have attended community meetings, we're kind of getting a sneak preview of some of this. And so overall, Jay, I just really, really enjoy the design. It's, I think, one of the more interesting, you know, private-public waterfront developments for the open space, especially mostly near the waterfront, the varied interactivity and access. And just love the plantings and the tidal pools and get downs and the steps and really, really good. I just had, you know, I guess one, one other question about the, related to the, I guess it was this, the first, I guess, in a waiver or modification, the reduction of evergreen species in that spot. I guess beneath the, the trees you have, is it going to be lawn or is it going to be dings or?
Oh, no lawn, the lawn is, sorry. The lawn is also only that very light green. The rest will be grasses, shrubs. We don't want to have a lot of shrubs that attract, that provide habitats that, you know, that'll provide kind of seasonal difference. So we don't actually, you know, there will be shrubs that will be probably four feet or more. But the idea is that there's some transparency, that it doesn't feel so, that it doesn't feel like there's a private space behind, because it's not really private, this is all retail. And so the idea is that you see people, people see out and in and it's a, it's a good thing.
Okay, great, sounds good. About this, the, the second request. Yeah, I guess I'm kind of pushing back on the guardrails on the pier, which are essentially cyclone fencing and it's kind of a real bummer in terms of the design. And it obviously doesn't comply with the waterfront access plan. So I really wish, you know, something, you know, designed could go in there other than the fencing. I know it's probably, you know, extensive to pull the existing fence railing out of there and install something more interesting, but still that, you know, that pier is forever. Obviously gets heavily used and you go into such, you know, the design of the waterfront, you know, has such amazing details, it's just kind of a shame to have it contrasted by, you know, that blase fence. And I just wonder, I just wanted to check out was the, in a previous, you know, the previous the ownership, previous design had, I guess, kind of a public open space or call it atrium that went back, you know, into where the physical building was. I guess it was kind of a cantilever design. So there would be, you know, some sort of public access, you know, within the, you know, the building footprint. Just wondering if they're planning to do something similar with the upcoming new design of the building. Thanks.
In this case, in lieu of something like that, there was this whole area. If you see my cursor is completely, it's given as, as similar to what was before a covered space. This might, I don't know, I can't recall exactly the proportions, but you know, the, the idea is that this is uncovered space.
Right, the, the previous sign, it actually, I mean, there was the supplemental space and then there was an inner space that went all the way to India's, to West Street, or almost to West Street, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have that in this design.
That's it for me, thank you.
Dale, can I, can I make a couple of comments? Anybody else, can I? Can you hear me?
Santi, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
Sorry, I was muted, yes, yes. Mitheli and then Katie is next.
No, thank you for the presentation. A few things I have actually concern. I know it's not a very big space and looking at your page right now, it's a lot of icon, with a lot of elements, which I know where they are, many of these, so they belong somewhere else. We're trying to bring all this idea in, it's a very small space. The only things I have concern, and I'm personally been talking for years about naturalize the waterfronts and definitely some of these idea are here, but I see that it's kind of very boxed. There's all these compartments, you've been using the word rooms and I feel is this idea of rooms, all these many compartments, which they don't naturalize at all, you know, we are concrete, we have other material and we have the deck. I don't know, I don't feel extremely comfortable with that idea. I wish it was some design that could be more flowing one, a natural one, emphasizing green spaces, emphasizing grass or other elements. So this, one of the first graphic things that just appear on the plan. Of course, there wasn't a section and other series of elevation that could allow me probably to understand what elevation we had. I have noted some that I saw seven feet, nine feet, probably five feet is the, the lowest point that they get down. So I believe something we cannot perceive from this drawing, but I, I look at the number, the other drawings you have. We are pretty elevated from the water. So I, I know individually, we can look at each component of this, but I, I feel there are too many components. I believe all these elements, the bench and the things that could assist in a more open space. I feel also that this may preclude the way how we are design-wise linking, because the general idea is to have a fluent waterfront. I know things have been happening years after year. This, I believe, has been a challenge to envision. You know, that's what the master plan would have allowed us to guide a little bit more to this process. So this one of my question, could we have done something that would have emphasized open space and emphasizing more on the general get down, you know? I believe Transmitted Park has been always along the years, a very good example. Our riprap is actually accessible, you know? You know, despite you walking on stone, you know, but it's not very elevated. And then other note, while we're talking, yeah, the, the pier reveal, I don't know, the stool is, it, it felt like it's dedicated to the pier, to serve the pier, waiting for the pier. I believe one of the emphasis maybe could be to really think at this small portion of land, it's a park and link together with our other components can become a park. And maybe those elements are good, but if we would have be spread all this component, the bench and the stools by the pier reveal, it would have spread along a bigger waterfront and maybe give a space to actually the park and the naturalized aspect of the, this portion is my comment.
Karen, it might be sense to look at the, at the last rendering that shows it, because it is two hundred feet. It's certainly not the biggest piece, but I do think that that might show more what the intention is, because you can see how much planting.
Yeah, so we have a big area comparatively to the scale of the site, right? Big, big area here and another big area here of, of kind of more wilder planting. There is the lawn here and we are obliged to provide certain amount of pathways and certain amount of benches, you know, as part of the zoning. There is a kind of a very softly inclined pathway that connects us to the north and there's one to the south, a ramp in fact on the south. And the get down, we softened to the extent that we could with stone. And in fact, similarly to what you're saying, thinking of riprap that would allow, you know, people to kind of stone hop, if you will. So you see, no, I mean, it is the site. It is, you know, we, we tried to put as much as we could into it that would both, you know, satisfy the zoning requirement, satisfy the kind of wanting to see more wilder and more ecological based design, while also providing the lawn that's required and all these other amenities, so.
And I think we did make amendments to the rip, you know, the get down to make it more accessible to the walk. There's definitely some feedback there. I mean, obviously the currents are strong, so we're balancing that with safety. And then there also was sort of desire from a lot of feedback that we got from other groups to have active spaces that could be programmed a little bit easier that weren't as, as much. So I think, you know, we're striking a balance between the two, I think, comments or hear of them. But I think, you know, there's a lot of different sort of, you know, people coming in different directions and we tried to, to address a lot of them. And I think, you know, there is a lot of sort of great open space that would be opportunity for people to sit and reflect and take in the greenery.
Yeah, but we, we've been taking away the green. I believe the, the pier is such a strong element of a main artifact there, whatever. I don't know, we have ten thousand square feet of pier. I believe it would have been a very good balance to give back, you know, to a little bit more natural and instead having concrete and, and deck. But again, thank you.
Can I ask a question about the rendering, thinking about what you're asking for, the, the variance you're asking for? Are those trees bigger than what, what you're asking for? And those are big trees, is that, are those trees what you're asking to be shrunk or am I in the wrong place?
The zoning requires a screening buffer between what is private and what is public. And the screening buffer usually is made of at least fifty percent evergreen and it should really screen. And in this case, we don't really see the need to screen, because everything is usable and, you know, welcoming. It's meant to be see-through.
So these trees are not evergreen?
Some of them are actually, will be evergreens, but they're not. The zoning calls for a screening buffer, you know how you see sometimes evergreens that are just a screen? Yeah, that's what it kind of wants.
This is what, what you're looking, what you're asking for is what we're seeing right here.
So, yeah, so we're asking, we will have trees, we have more than required trees, we will have shrubs, we will have grasses, you know, and perennials, but we're not putting fifty percent four foot tall evergreen.
Can you explain the second variance again, one more time, what, what that?
The second variance is, so it's the stainless steel guardrail. We are keeping, we ask to keep the guardrail that's existing on the pier, because we're not really touching the pier much. Whereas, and the second part of it is that guardrail along the, on the, on the pier reveal, the top. The top bar, we're asking for a waiver for the top bar from being a stainless steel to being wood. Because it's a countertop, it's a lean bar, we want people to feel comfortable against it. The bottom of this guardrail is the same as what's required as the walk. So we're not asking for full kind of modification to that guardrail, it's only to the top bar.
I'm not sure you answered Trina's question about the, the screening and, and the evergreens. The, the picture that you're showing us has trees that are clearly, or they, they appear to be very tall trees.
Yeah, we have trees.
So that's not where, where you're asking for the, the waiver? Is the waiver behind those taller trees?
No, the, sorry.
Do you want to pull the site plan to show that where this buffer is supposed to be? So this relates specifically to the screening buffer, which is a narrow portion along, along the boundary of the waterfront public access area next to private space. That area is supposed to have the evergreens to create a, a real visual screen between the public space and the private space.
So Dale, the area that you were looking at is, you're looking at some of the trees that are shown in here. If you were complying, what you would see would be, you know, evergreens sort of running from the ground all the way up and you wouldn't be able to see through the trees, you wouldn't be able to have plantings, because it would just be one kind of shrub that's like a hedge, is almost the way I would think of it.
Exactly.
So it's more permeable. Yeah, it's just not a, it's not a wall of trees, it's just trees and plantings as opposed to a wall of one kind of tree.
Right, okay, thank you. Katie, I know Katie has some questions, Katie Naprotowski.
Hi, I have some questions, thanks Dale. I have some questions and some recommendations. But first, I just want to acknowledge how far this shoreline has come from the northern parcels, which were all hard edge. And so it's really nice to see this difference. And also I know that you've worked with groups a lot to, you know, get the elements that should be there or that people want. And I think it's just great. Okay, so I do agree with some of what Santi says, but I don't feel, I'm not asking for really recommendations in that regard because of all the work that has been done and input that has been given. I think it's at the end game now. And also I do believe that there is some kind of a balance there. Okay, so here's some recommendations. One, cobblestones, which are on Java Street currently, the old cobblestones, that they somehow be repurposed if they're, the originals are not going to be used on Java Street. The same thing was done at Marsha P. Johnson, you can. the originals are not going to be used on Java Street. The same thing was done at uh Marsha P. Johnson. You can see them there. They look beautiful along with um new simulated cobblestones. Um, so if they can be used somewhere in the design or some of them. Um, next, curves at the corners. They did this also in Marsha P. Johnson. So e- every angle in this design is um, uh, it's hard edge. And I would just recommend softening those edges. Um, the waterfront text amendment does say curved paths. Um, there are no curves here. It would be nice to have some curves. Um, uh, I don't know if you're agreeable to that. And if if there are not curves as a recommendation, at least the angles where the paths meet can have a curve to them rather than be like this or be like this, because people are going to walk take the shortcut around those curves. Changing that, um, sugar, changing, changing that, um, just that slight little bit can make all the difference, I think, in terms of how something looks. Now, I have a contractor at the door, so I have to run and get that and I will be right back. Somebody else, guys, I'm sorry, it's really poor timing.
Actually, I wonder if if you took Katie's suggestion, if that would uh make Sante feel a little bit better about the design. What do you think, Sante?
Sorry, say it again.
Uh, if they took, if they took Katie's suggestion to make things more curved and 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 softer, would that help uh you with your concerns?
Unfortunately, I wish I didn't have this understanding. And of course, uh, I I see these, this old box and and of course, the hard edge, but it's not just the hard edge. I see things tridimensionally and of course, the plan is what we have, but I I can already see this tridimensionally. I believe we have compartmented, we have treated uh, this portion of waterfront like a moss and interior space, creating all these components that yes, they fit the requirement, all these elements that we kind of wanted. But those icon, those picture telling us those belong to other spaces, they've been done in a different contest. I see, I don't see the waterfront. I love to see also in regard to that continuity of which we've been struggling and it's been very difficult. And every time I wish uh this could be uh the opportunity. And yes, we have achieved to have certain element. This is not what we got on the north side. Uh, but I feel so boxes, so many elements and the private part, the public part and the tree that I see a lot of division. And and when I said something more fluent, something could flow together, that idea of naturalization definitely will cancel those hard edge and and but I I understand, maybe it's too late, but uh the, I I don't know, Katie will resolve the general uh design concept. I believe it's an issue of design concept, which I don't feel um really tuned. I can like individually each components. Uh, but together, uh, I've, I feel that there is something is not really clicking. And then going back to the railing, this has been, wouldn't be a good precedent. Katie has been talking for years. Uh, trying to be consistent with the master plan. Every time we go for variance uh, for something like that, railing has been always something very important that the community battle for, you know? And and also the pavers, we're talking about concrete, master plan, we're calling for asphalt pavers. Um, so I forgot to mention that I was even wondering uh, are we introducing also a new material that is not, I believe, contemplated in the waterfront master plan? So they'll, that's.
We looked at the asphalt paver. I would just say the asphalt pavers, we're trying to actually uh, use a better paper. The asphalt is petroleum based, right? It adds a lot of heat to any pathway, right? It's a meat heat, it's a material, so, so great. There is a, there are concrete pavers, the hex pavers and others that are used along the waterfront, so we actually try to use similar gray, uh, so in the color palette that what is to the north of us, but stay away from the asphalt.
Um, no, nothing against.
One, one is trans please.
Sorry.
I I've been a brutalist in design and I saw, I love the concrete. It was just in reference to the fact that the amount of asphalt papers that performed very well even during the hurricanes. Uh, they are still there and and because they are in the master plan to avoid the precedent, then we bring another material, you know, because I'm not against the concrete. I love the concrete. I I'm sure there's many other products, uh, which I don't know. I mean, you just uh, that's all. It's purely a reference. We have a master plan to guide us, you and other developer and they will still have to continue to design this waterfront. That's my answer to you.
Sante, I don't understand. Are you objecting to the use of the concrete pavers?
Um, yeah, I don't know. It's kind of vague. I I saw they were saying concrete, but we're supposed to have asphalt. That's what our master plan uh is telling us. And the same, the railing, we asked for variance. And this has been an issue for the community, railing, and Katie, you know, has been battling for uh, the use of the railing. And I know the pier, uh, I don't know, what do they have in the pier right now? A chain link fence or some uh, I can't remember exactly.
Cyclone fence, that's what I said earlier.
Yeah, so.
So are you objecting to the wood? Are you objecting to the 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 variance so they can have the wood on top of the um the garden, the rails?
Uh, actually, the uh, the wood is always welcome as the bench made of wood. That's a very uh nice element. Uh, I don't know, we'll have to look in detail. The the concept is kind of vague to see how harmoniously they could be combined, but definitely the general fans on the on the pier, I personally, I will stick to the our stainless steel, uh, that is in the master plan. And um, yeah, that's, uh, if there is a an additional element that the pier reveal with the wood could be integrated in that design. Um, yeah, I would be against, especially if it's kind of linking to the design of the bench. Uh, that could be probably an harmonious integration addition. Um, the pier, uh, I would probably stick to the same to have the continuity of the waterfront to the rail that is in our master plan. Um, yeah, and definitely, uh, I'm against this, uh, all this box, this compartment, uh, those rooms in in our park, I wish to be something more fluent, I repeat, for the last time. They could naturalize and people could transition from an area to another.
Okay, that I think is 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 clear. And and Katie, Sante has mentioned your name a few times with respect to the railings. So do you want to say something?
Yeah, I I have a few points to make now that I'm back. Thanks. Um, I understand what Sante is saying about the compartments, if somehow that can be changed a little bit, with smaller pathways, which are a little bit can be. But I do understand too that this was, we've had opportunities before, I'm echoing, is somebody on? Sorry. If there's, we have had a lot of opportunity for input and I think that if we wanted to have it much different than this, it should have been said earlier. That said, if it can be compartmentalized, then I think there's a way to do that. You know, you had to put the ADA access down by the shoreline and that's changed the design a little bit, I think. Um, but um, I do think that there are a lot of nice elements. So let me just go back. Having curves at the corner, I think would really soften the whole design. Um, I'd like to say use of Virginia pine. I know you talked about pine. And I don't know if that was one you referred to. I don't know its technical name. But they're native, they grow incredibly well. We have one that we planted in transmitter. It was this big and it's now like five feet in two years. Seriously, it's native to the area. Hudson Point South has some great um, Virginia pines. Uh, uh, it'd be great if there were plantings uh for monarch butterfly. I think you probably already considered that. It would be great if we had a monarch corridor all along, as they do now up on the Hudson River in parts. Um, in terms of the asphalt paper, uh, I know that there are different types of asphalt paper. I've seen different ones. Um, transmitter park has a really nice one. It seems to get furnished in a nice way rather than looking like asphalt. Um, uh, so just there are different choices of them. Um, I get the, get the one that can look a little burnished. It looks nice after it gets worn a little bit. Um, I say that the waivers are all okay. I like the railing, the wood railing on top of the get down. The waiver for the um ferry landing, I do not think that we should approve of that as a board. Uh, it is now chain link fence, I believe. I don't think there is any other ferry landing anywhere in New York City that has a chain link fence. And it does not look good and I don't think that we should approve that waiver. I agree with the waiver for the um, the plantings. Um, absolutely. And I actually applaud you for doing that. Um, uh, it looks like there's shade trees and I think that's fantastic. In terms of the walkways, I'd like to just see the concrete again, but also to make a suggestion that perhaps some of those walkways could be wood. Except for the main path, which needs to, uh, by the shoreline, which I think can't be wood, but maybe some I think that, uh, well, I know that on the master plan, wood is allowed. Uh, wood is one of the materials. Um, it just could soften it up a little bit. Um, it could soften it up a lot. So it's really is uh something I would recommend is uh, some of the walkways or the slips being wood.
We love wood, but it's uh, it's a little bit low. It could be, you know, it would require a lot of maintenance if it's.
Say it again?
We love wood, but it's a, the park is a little low. It will, you know, in case of flooding or whatnot, it will be, it would be a lot of maintenance to, and and even with no flooding, the wood requires a lot of maintenance. So we kept it pretty minimal uh, up where it's a little bit higher.
Okay, yeah, I thi- I think that there are other parts on the waterfront around, not on our waterfront yet that are wood. So.
It might be higher, yeah, it might be higher in elevation.
I don't know, maybe somehow you can find a way to put that in there because it would soften it, soften things a little bit. Um, uh, but that, that, I think that's all of, okay, that's the concrete planks. So the co- that, that's what the precast concrete planks, that's what the, those, okay, those walkways would be. Hmm, interesting.
Yeah, the idea is that they feel like a plank of, in some ways of wood, but it's not going to be wood.
Can I make another suggestion? Um, and I don't know if how the other people on the committee would feel. But what about uh something that kind of mimics bluestone? Um, you know, in uh, uh, Hunter Point South, the narrower walkways are beautiful, um, concrete. That would, that would fit in with the WAP because you have to have a certain amount of gray. It's a beautiful color concrete and the the lines, instead of the lines being um all in uniform, they're sort of out of, like, if it goes like this, the lines of them go like this. It's really kind of nice. Um, it just, it seems like maybe.
I mean, that's poured in place. Yeah, that was probably poured in place with joints, scored joints in various directions. We we actually had a waiver for the concrete, for poured in place concrete, and we removed it in lieu of using the concrete unit pavers, which.
What do you like about the precast concrete planks? I mean,
I think it feels kind of rugged, a little more kind of, uh, again, a nod to the industrial kind of past. It is a warmth to the aggregate. I think it's could feel really nice. Yeah. Um, and along with the wood and the concrete pavers and, and, you know, I think it would, yeah, you know.
It feels like it blends more? Is that what you're saying? Kind of?
Yeah, and it fits, yeah, it it fits the palette of also the cobblestone on Java. So, you know, it's kind of, I think it's and it is warmer. It's not when a, you know, that's, yeah.
Yeah. I haven't seen it, so I'm not totally, I'm, I'm not.
I like the aggregates, I'm not against.
I'm not making a um, a pitch for the other really um hard line or anything. But I, I want to just say thank you again for really considering um what to do here. Um, and coming up with a plan that has a lot of what was intended by the master plan. Just curve those lines a little.
We actually had a straight pass and we kind of curved this whole front line.
To make a challenge as well, right? So that, those are, I mean, those are good suggestions, Katie. I mean, I, you know, I, I, and I, I hear you on the, on the, on the pier fence. Uh, you know, we, you know, we, we were sound long-term partners in the community. You know, it's just very expensive to remove that fence at this time. We have a lot of improvements to the pier that we have to do itself structurally first. Um, you know, that's, that's where we're coming from on that. So that isn't really costing at this point, but you know, we are long-term players in this community and that pier is a significant portion, so it's maybe something we'll take up on a later date. Um, but right now, we're just really focused on getting this online and getting the pier structurally sound. That's really the reason behind it.
I think that it needs to be, if if we're to, if we are to agree to that waiver Dell and the rest of the committee, I think that there must be a um, a um, what is that restrictive declaration or whatever it is that puts a timeframe on it? So that it gets done within one year or two years. I, I think.
We want it, we want it done while they're working on the pier, while the pier, the pier is closed. This is the opportunity to do it.
Trina, you're right. Yes, you're right.
Is the railing?
The pier, the pier is not closed. The pier is not closed. The pier is fully open right now, so.
But it's not, it's it's not being used for women.
It's not closed and it's open and it is being used, just for clarity, just for clarification standpoint, it's really.
Is the railing around the pier reveal, um, is that what's, what's, should, what is being, what is supposed to be on the pier itself, rather than the cyclone fence?
Uh, it's this one at the edge of the platform, right? This is what, that's the.
Is that what the master plan calls for, that that type of railing?
Yeah, yeah, that's what's in the zoning and uh, the one around the pier reveal, I mean, just the top bar of it. The bottom is the same.
So I think it's pretty clear that the, that the committee um is uniform in not wanting, at least the members that have spoken so far, no one has spoken in favor of the the fence that's there. I think it's pretty, to to me, it's clear that um the, the app, you're asking that they can, you can just keep the the fencing that's up there is not gonna be approved by the committee. Um, I could be wrong, but down, down, you know, as as we vote, but I think um I think that's pretty clear. I'm also wondering about the possibility of making things, making the, the um design a bit more flowing and and less boxy.
I mean, I think we've got a lot of different inputs from people on sort of the desire to have a multi-use area. I, I mean, I think it flows pretty well. I think there's tremendous amount of open space. I respect Sante's comments, but I don't feel that this is a boxy design. I think it has tremendous amount of places sitting and opportunities and a lot of place for reflection, open space. So I, I don't agree with the, with that, that it feels boxy in my opinion, but people are allowed to have their own different opinions.
Um, Adele, can I ask, um, I I tend to agree with that. I like, I like the varied um, spaces, you know, a lot of them varied in, in um, the content of of, you know, physical structures and plantings and so forth. Um, regarding the villages, are the lawns and areas, are they raised up a little bit? Um, higher than the pathways, sort of like a domino?
Yeah, the lawn is a four inch curve. Yeah, the lawn is a four-inch curb, yeah. With a couple or more, a few openings for people with wheelchairs or strollers that can, you know, answer.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments before we end this and go to the committee meeting?
Um, I do, Dell.
And Dell, there is one person who wanted to speak.
Okay, thank you, Marie. So Cory?
So, uh, I, I had a question about the lawn. So I know over at the edge, they have an issue with dogs on their lawn. So it kind of became a de facto dog park and then sort of tore it up. So I just wanted to know if you had any consideration for that.
I mean, one thing that we're doing is putting a dog run most likely within the building itself. So I think that will sort of help with some of that as well as, you know, obviously balancing the amount of paving versus land space as well. And then obviously we're long-term owners and manager of the company. So I think, you know, we'll work, work for the dog community, sort of hopefully to find alternatives to the park itself. Including an internal dog run, which will be on one of our roofs in the building.
Got it.
So will that dog run be accessible to the public or just to the people?
No, just to the building residents.
So I, I, I think Cory's question, you know, included people in the public for having their.
It's something to consider of the space because the edge doesn't have a dog run, but, um, but we can let park does. Um, so I just think it's something that you guys might want to be aware of or talk to edge ownership. I think that they actually changed it out so that they now have, um, like AstroTurf, which is an ideal, but just something that, um, it, it obviously ruins a grassy area if you don't want to have your toddler sitting on it.
Yeah, the, the grassy triangle, Greenpoint Landing is a de facto dog run, basically.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, those are good points. And we're definitely aware of the balance of trying to have an active programming space available for people and not have it overtaken by dogs, which I think our neighbor to the north, that, that struck something. It's going to be a combination of providing alternatives to our community residents as well as management and ongoing sort of seeing how that goes.
Got it, and I just, uh, in terms of some of the things that other people said, um, you know, I agree in adding some evergreens just because obviously evergreens are, are green in the winter as well. So I think that they do add a, a certain quality to the park and then, you know, making it feel a little bit more like a park as compared to just, you know, an area in front of a building. Um, and then this is just a question more because I don't know the answer to it. Um, so it seems that you guys are bringing in rocks that you are putting into the river in front of the site, is that correct?
There is the riprap and the bulkhead is a little bit underneath. So we are covering the bulkhead so you don't see the wall of the bulkhead with riprap. So the riprap kind of covers it. And then here and there, we might have a big boulder coming in. Again, as a kind of a, a plaything, something that's more natural material, kind of climbing from the water onto the upland. We also are planning to have some driftwood and, and things like that. So it's kind of, again, kind of bringing the materiality at the water's edge up a little bit.
The title?
Well, where the picture that we're looking at right now, all of those are large sort of white rocks. And beneath that is the riprap, or that is the riprap and then.
That is the part of the riprap, yeah. It's the riprap that will be planting amongst it, um, at the edge, yeah.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, Marie, someone did sign up to speak?
Yes, I tried to turn this microphone on.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Uh, it's Renzo?
Yes, this is Renzo, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know why it wasn't working. I don't know if you guys can see me. Can you guys see me?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone.
Could be seen and heard.
It's good to hear, okay, okay. So, uh, good evening, Community Board One. My name is Renzo Ramirez and I am a member of 32BJ SCIU. I'm here on behalf of my union to share our concerns regarding One Java Owner LLC's proposed development at One Java Street Waterfront. We believe that developers should commit to providing prevailing wage building service jobs in order to build a more equitable economy in New York City. Most building service jobs are filled by local members of the community who need and deserve family sustaining wages and benefits. One Java Owner LL has reached out about making a commitment to the prevailing wage for building service workers. We will continue to keep the community updated as we hold conversations with the developer. Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. All right, anything else before we, um, close up the public hearing and move to our committee meeting? All right, uh, so that's the end of the hearing. Let's proceed to our committee meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, Marie, do we have to have another roll call or can we just proceed?
Um, do you, you want me to do a roll call? We can do that.
I, I don't really want you to do a roll call. I, I don't think we need it, but if, if we have to have one, we can do it. Otherwise I would just proceed.
You'd need it to open a committee meeting.
We need the roll call?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Dell Teague?
Dell Teague, yeah.
Maria Vieira? Trina McKeva? Steven Chesla? Erin Drinkwater? Moish Endig? Bozena Kaminsky? Abraham Leibowitz? Sante Micali? Rabbi David Niedeman?
Here.
Karen Nievers? Isaac Sofa? Robert Solano? Steven Weidberg? Steven, you here? Steven?
Yeah, yes.
William Vega? I see you, William.
I see him.
Can you, can you say you're here? Simon Wyser? Michael Andrews? Keith Burgo? Corey Canton? Michael Kowalski?
Here.
Katie Nebeltozki? Allison Stone?
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. You have a call.
You have a call, okay, thank you. Okay, um, so. It seems that there are some, um, there is some difference of opinion with respect to the design as to whether it is flowing enough or whether, you know, they, the, the, their design, which has the different sections, uh, and segments is, uh, acceptable. And, um, there is, as I say, a, a difference of agreement. I, I guess one thing I will raise here that I, to be fair, um, they have reached out to the community, um, a number of times. And as Katie pointed out, at this point, it may be late in the game to ask them to come up with a very different design, especially since they've responded to, um, prior, uh, opinions and requests, uh, from the community. Uh, but I think we need to discuss that. I, I actually understand what Sante is saying. But on the other hand, o- obviously people on the committee have witnessed their reaching out. And, um, at this point, I don't know if it's realistic to, uh, ask them to have, have another design that's more flowing. Uh, Katie, you did in, in your, your request to make things a little bit more curved, that I think is specific enough that maybe they could, if everybody agreed to that, maybe that was, is something they could, uh, do at this point, at this stage. I also think it's, um, I, I'm not, I'm confused about whether we're going, whether the committee wants to object to the use of the concrete pavers rather than the asphalt. I think that many people feel concrete is better in general. But is there, uh, is there a feeling that even though concrete might be more desirable in many ways, that we want to keep the asphalt? I, I'm confused about that.
I think I should raise a technical point. Technically, we're not voting on the design. We're just voting on these two waivers. And the second one has two parts to it. The first one is about the, um, you know, the trees.
Yep.
Um, not being fifty percent evergreen. And then the second one's about the pier railings, that railing around the, um, whatever it's called, the. Yeah, thank you. But we could, um, attach conditions that are related to, um, to one or the others, related to the issues people have with the design in, in general.
I, I, I agree, but I think if we're going to, if the committee wants to, uh, address some conditions that we would like to, you know, uh, make a, a statement about, uh, for instance, the railing around the pier, uh, I think now may be the only time to make that statement. Maybe I'm wrong, is, is you have a sense that there would be a, another time when we could do it?
No, I think that's now, I think that's, it's like a yes or no. They're asking for a straight out waiver for that against the waterfront, um, access plan.
So let me just ask about the screening buffer because that may be something easy. Um, I didn't hear any objections to the waiver allowing for a decrease in the height for the screening buffers so that there's more visibility for, essentially, I think, for the public. And we agree that that's acceptable?
I, I agree with that waiver.
I agree too.
I didn't hear anyone objecting to it.
No.
So do we want to take a vote on that? Because if we can get rid of that, then we go to the second wa- waiver and then we can discuss, uh, any conditions that, if, if we can, you know, agree on any conditions that we want to make. I think it's pretty clear that, um, that the, um, the railing that they, that they have now that they'd like to keep, uh, around the pier is pretty, um, i- is just not acceptable.
Well, especially because they have the railing that, that does, um, does comply around the pier review.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, you know, it's tedious. So how about we have a, a vote on whether to approve the, uh, the wave, the screening buffer waiver?
One question about screening buffer.
Motion to approve that.
I second that motion.
Who said, okay.
Hey Cory, what was your? Thanks, so my question was with the screening buffer. My understanding of that was that it was, uh, some sort of shrubbery that they would like not to have to use. Um, but I did think that we did want to have some evergreens in replacement of that. So something in addition to provide a little more coverages. Was I right on that?
Well, no, I, I, what I'm understanding is that they're, they have a requirement to have fifty percent evergreen tree species, but they want to reduce it to like ten and use other types of species that, um, will lose its leaves during the cold months. But you'll have the view through the bottom of the tree that you won't have with an evergreen.
I understood too, and I, yeah.
And is that separate from the screening?
I think that's the same thing.
I think for the screening, they were, they were, they don't want to have to have these, these, um, evergreens that will ultimately, uh, prevent anyone. It'll, it'll essentially be like, like shrubbery, like, like a wall of evergreens so that, and, and people will not be able to see, uh, through it. And it will, in their, their opinion is that what it'll do is it'll provide more, um, privacy for the residents than they would like to provide. They would like to have more openness and for, for the public.
Well, I imagine they want views for their building. Um, but I mean, I, I guess my suggestion would be, I don't think we need a wall of, of greenery, but I do think that some of the trees that they have planted could be evergreens.
I'm, I can't, I don't know, they're, they're, I don't, I mean, they're asking for a waiver so that they don't have to have the four-foot-high, um, evergreens creating this, this almost solid, uh, wall, so.
I think they, they, they're asking for ten percent instead of, uh, fifty percent. And, uh, that, that's my motion. I, um, you know, I'm making motion to, uh, to approve that.
Okay, let's, uh, let's have a vote.
Can I just add to this point? I believe that it's from the retail, not from an apartment, if that's what they said, by the way.
That's true, it was from, it would, it would probably block off.
Can the retail be, uh, a bar on the water?
I, I didn't understand that.
The retail be also, uh, entertainment? Because, uh, then the screen would be very, uh, very important to, uh, to divide something with very high activity, not just a resident from the building sitting there, but an actual bar with outdoor space in the very small park. So the fifty percent, of course, as Cory said, you, is kind of too ambiguous right now at these stages. We reduce it to ten percent, which is practically full visibility of the waterfront. But what Cory said, they want visibility and we do not know at this stage why this visibility. Is that very innocent?
But Sante, we don't know, so we, we, we don't know. We, and we won't, we can't find that out right now, so, um.
No, but I want to say that the dangers to reduce it is to open the park to something can be more invasive for the park, that's all.
I actually like the idea. I hope that there's a restaurant there. Really wonderful to eat or, or, you know, have a, have a at the waterfront. And I would love that, and I think it'd be wonderful to be able to have more visibility.
Well, we, I don't, I don't agree about that. We have so many restaurants that, that they taking away from the park.
But we have, we have no restaurants that are on the shoreline here at all.
We shouldn't have it.
That's my opinion.
That's outside of the scope of what we're talking about.
Really, that, let's, let's have a mo- let's have a vote on this motion now because we have, uh, we have more to deal with right now. So let's, let's have a vote on the motion, which is to approve the, uh, the waiver for the screening buffer. So Marie, could you have a?
I have, I have Ms. Kaminsky, she made the motion.
Yes, and Katie and Appletozki seconded it.
Okay. Dell Teague?
Dell Teague, yes.
Maria Vieira? Trina McKeva? Yes. Steven Chesla? Erin Drinkwater? Moish Endig? Bozena Kaminsky? Abraham Leibowitz? Sante Micali?
No, no.
Rabbi Niedeman?
Here.
Uh, how do you vote on the motion? Uh, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Karen Neves? Isaac Sofa?
Yes.
Robert Solano? Steven Whiteberg?
Yes.
William Vega? William? I see you're on the call, but I don't hear you. Simon Weiser? Michael Andrews? Michael? Mr. Andrews?
Sorry, that was me, Dell, unmuting um, on the walk back from my kid's soccer practice, so I could speak next.
I'm sorry?
It, it's Keith. I, I'm up next, so I unmuted. You're probably just hearing background.
Okay. Keith Burger?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Michael Kolotzka?
Yes.
Katie Nebeltozki? Kate?
Yeah.
Allison Stone?
Yes.
Okay, so you have one no and the rest have been yes. And motion passes. Dell?
Dell, you're muted.
Can you, can, can, Marie, can you tell me how many yeses there are?
Well, just give me one second.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen. Thank you. All right, let's go on to the um, the waiver for the guard rail. Any, any thoughts on that?
If we don't have support now, they're never going to change it.
Yeah, I, so I'd like to make a motion to um, disapprove the waiver for the pier here, uh, guard rail.
Guard rail.
They use something that complies with the waterfront access plan by to approve the uh, the wood railing for the, the pier.
The pier.
Uh, thing I keep forgetting. What's it called?
Pier review, I think.
Second with, I'll second that.
Who seconded it?
Katie.
Katie. Okay, vote. Marie, could you ask for a vote?
Del Teague?
I'm asking for a vote.
Yes.
Maria Viera?
Maria Viera.
Not present.
Not present.
Trina McKeva?
Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Yes.
Steven Chesler?
Steven Chesler.
Erin Drinkwater?
Erin Drinkwater.
Not present.
Not present.
Mois Endig?
Mois Endig.
Not present.
Not present.
Rosanna Kaminsky?
Rosanna Kaminsky, yes.
Yes.
Abraham Leibovitz? Not present.
Not present.
Sante Macheli?
Sante Macheli.
Yes.
Rabbi Niedeman?
Rabbi Niedeman.
Yes.
Yes.
Karen Neves?
Karen Neves.
Not present. Isaac Sofa?
Isaac Sofa.
Yes.
Yes.
Robert Solano?
Robert Solano.
Not present.
Not present.
Steven Whiteberg?
Steven Whiteberg.
Steven?
Yes.
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 Thank you. William Vega?
Yes.
Simon Weiser? Michael Andrews? Mr. Andrews? Keith Burger?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Michael Kolotzka?
Yes.
Katie Nebeltozki? Kate?
Yes.
Allison Stone?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's unanimous.
Yes.
The next, my next question is, um, are there any other comments that we want to make in addition to our vote?
Um, regarding the ground, you know, the certain pathway surfaces, yes, and consider using wood where appropriate, maybe in secondary pathways or um, Katie, what's the concrete they use that Hunter points out?
Um, it's like a blue stone poured concrete, but she said that they would need to have a waiver for that.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, I, another recommendation is that they use Virginia pine. Um, I, I propose that anyway. It is native to the area, actually, the actual area, not just to the east coast. Um, and then, uh,
Does anyone have an objection to putting that in as a recommendation? This isn't an official vote, so I'm not going to ask for a roll call. Any objection to suggesting Virginia pines?
I like that idea.
I like that idea.
Okay, great. Do we want to also ask them to have some um, evergreens?
Well, they're going to have ten percent.
Well, Virginia pine, Virginia pine is an evergreen.
That's true, Virginia pine is an evergreen. Yep, right, sorry.
And then, I'd also like to put in as a recommendation that they curve the corners a little bit, Dell.
Does anyone object to that?
Um, all right, I just, I understand where Katie's coming from, but I feel like with the theme that they have designed, I think it might look a little weird having just rounded corners. Unless they can add, they can add um, curviness to throughout the, the park. I feel like if they're going to do curviness, do it, you know, much more extensively, but just to do the corners. And I think they might look a little weird, but. But.
I hear you, Steve.
Yeah.
It has to be all of them, but there are some parts that, that, I don't know, it just could be softened a little somehow. But I, I hear what you're saying, Steve, but it's very angular and.
And they soften? Is there a way to soften the edges of the pathways?
Guys, if I can say, if our complex, we're talking very generically, it's a, it's a problem of design concept, I believe, and uh, I don't think everybody's comfortable. Uh, again, I feel always the only uh, person here that has to go in opposition and say, if it's something that's not functioning, that they're meeting or not, uh, I believe we need to express. Maybe they are, they are, they're just, they're very extreme, very sharp angle. Uh, I don't think the drawing gave us ability to understand. They said that clearly there were not enough elevation section. So you saw a couple rendering, which was instrumental to have you voted in a certain way, and that's very normal when you do this rendering. So if you tell me you have fully understood what this design is going to be, based on that, I believe it, I don't think, can be true. And again, I will, I repeat myself and I don't want to take any more of your time. Uh, if the design concept can be taken and brought to, to certain modification to achieve the, uh, to be a little bit more fluent, we have indirectly resolved the issue of this sharp edge corner that Katie is calling to round them up. But it's still just to round them up. Those corner you see there on a plan, they are in different elevation. There's pier, there's up, place is down, a place are up, so you know, just rounded. You had to change the concept.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Did I explain clearly what I mean?
Yes, it's, I think that's a good point.
I would just add, but I feel like the plant, all the plantings, I mean, you know, I feel like, you know, um, Karen and James Corner Field Operations are master plant designers. And um, and I think between the plantings and the wood, the wooden seating and the railings will uh, will soften things in their own way, I feel like. Um, I don't know if you've seen Hudson River or Pier Twenty-Six. It's pretty, you know, very straight, but it has a lot of textures and wood and plantings and um, going on, so um. So I don't know, I mean, I love, I love the whole, I, the concept of curves versus rigid edges. Um, but I don't know if it's a hundred percent applicable, you know, to every design, you know.
Also Dell, another reason I feel this way, unfortunately, I couldn't attend other meeting. I had serious family. I'm attending even too many meetings, I have to say, so I'm always here in this, in this committee meetings. Uh, it's a little bit against what we've been advocating for years when we try to stop certain trend, right, you know, and we've been talking naturalized waterfront, the rounding up. I don't know, I feel it is so sharp, in, in a sense geometrically, sharp, this design. It feels a little bit uh, against about what we've been talking for a few years here, you know, that's all. So personally, I would not feel uh, uh, to give an honest vote if I was saying yes, just to follow you.
If this is, of course, we're not voting on this, I'm just trying to get a consensus here. Would, would it make any sense?
So voting, yes, I, I didn't mean that.
Yeah. But, but would it make any sense to ask them to consider the, the possibility of having a slightly more flowing, having slightly uh, less angular um, uh, less, less sharp angles or, or Steve, I don't know if you would go with that because you, I think you said that you liked the the design and you liked having the, the different.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm not objecting to it, but I, um, but I understand.
Also, that's a strong tenet of the design, the pathways and the line of the, when they explained the concept, that was one of the first things that were explained. Just the way the pathways worked. This is true. But, but this is true in the sense that, yes, this was the concept, that this is like, I don't know, uh, boat slips or something like that, but when we think about it earlier than that, there would have been natural shoreline down there with natural pathways, which wouldn't have it straight. So they can harken to other things to, to um, you know, could go one way or the other. Um, I do feel like it's nicer to have more fluidity. That's a personal preference. Um. Yeah.
Well, are we, uh, again, is there, would there be an objection to asking them to consider the possibility of uh, more fluidity in the, in the design?
No objection.
It, it's up to them. If they, if they absolutely can't, they can't, but it would be a suggestion to consider it.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay. And I'm, I'm interested again in the um, the material for the pavers. Is there actually an objection to, to switching to the concrete rather than the asphalt? Because it sounds to me like there are a lot of um, advantages to concrete over asphalt.
Why are you saying that? I, I believe, I la, I love concrete. Uh, I just, um, to me, as I said before, it is more because we, we've been talking about the master plan uh, before years ago and certainly something that we do know that those asphalt pavers, uh, they actually have been performing quite well. I saw concrete, if concrete is not cast properly, if concrete is not engineered properly, uh, uh, may not have the same durability of these pavers. And the pavers, the asphalt, they perform well even during the hurricane. Look at the piers. Look, even at Transmitter Park, Quada Park, how sometime cracks, telegraph, and, and, and again, you know, is that it will happen here? I don't know. And is the concrete going to look nice? Again, I love concrete. I said, I'm a, I'm a brutalist designer. It's just, I'm trying to stick to the idea. We have a master plan, we know certain machio, they look good, they've been performing well, they may require less maintenance. Uh, do we want to break the rule and create the precedence? That's all.
The, the, the whole papers are flat throughout the, like in Tranmet or other parks. They're more at the short. And, uh, I, I kind of like having a varied surface rather than it all being the same asphalt. Um. Yeah.
Yeah.
It, the asphalt was never meant or prescribed to be throughout the park. There, in the master plan, there's varied surface areas, actually.
Also, the concrete costs less money. The chain link fence costs less money. Every time we choose for these variances, they have some budget reason because they cost less. Just, I can tell you because I know very well, just the pier on that fence we just modeled, uh, uh, going with the stainless steel probably can cost millions and millions of dollars more. Millions and millions. Probably that, that pier is three million dollars in railing, you know. So uh, that's what we're doing when we bought in favor of certain machio that are uh, variance to the master.
Yeah, the concrete is not a variance.
Um, yeah, this is not where, um, I, I, again, we're not voting on this. I just felt that if we have a uni- unanimity in something, then we can put it down as a uh, a, a suggestion, a recommendation. But it doesn't, I don't get the sense that there's a unanimous uh, sense about these pavers.
So my, my comment on asphalt is that it draws a lot of heat.
Right.
So, I, I think concrete would be subvert.
Yeah. All right, is there any, are, are there any other um, things that you want to add to this? If not, we'll just um, call it a night. Okay, thank you, everyone. So that's, I'll see you all on the ninth.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
The night stays safe.